Cover this on the, so unless anyone got a question on that. Okay, sidewalks, standard. Any questions on that? Christine Winger?
Did we talk about, oh, School Street? So, did you just skip over School Street or no?
Sorry, you've been engineering that, so, I mean, it's reconstruction for this year.
But we were gonna talk about how long, how far we go down it. Do we do the whole thing or half of it?
No, I don't remember that conversation. I thought we doing the whole thing.
We're talking about reconstruction of School Street.
Mm-hmm.
We'll do it from, reconstruct it from Wooddale Road to the west end.
Okay, was there a neighborhood meeting held or something on the street or?
Uh, we held a project open house where we were available for any residents who wanted to come in and talk to us and,
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we did have some residents come in and we're, I mean, we're available for anyone to talk to us about it anytime, so, and we'll send another project notice out before it goes to construction.
And now, how many homes are on that street?
Uh, I don't know the exact number, probably.
Fifteenth.
Yeah, it's fifteen, twenty, something like that.
And it leads to the dead end at the, at the reservoir?
Correct.
And does, the, the last house down there, is it still owned by the resident or no?
To my knowledge, it still is. I don't think that's been bought out.
Okay. Okay. Okay, that's, that's okay. I'm okay, thank you. Okay, so, I mean, about half that street, it may never have houses on it. Is that correct as you go down further?
I, I think the floodplain only extends up to the first lot or two. There's still several, um, in that western half that, they're not affected by the floodplain, so I think they'll still be viable homes. I think we'll be able to shorten up the pavement a little bit from what's there now, because originally there were homes further down there. So, we'll be able to shorten the pavement up a little bit, but, you know, we still have to provide access at the reservoir, so, I mean, the street would still need to go down there anyway, at least to serve that.
And, and are we planning on curb and gutter for the whole street?
Uh, correct, curb and gutter for the whole street.
I just, I, my perspective is it's overdoing it for, for what we have there. So, I, I'm voting no on this and if no one else wants to support it, that's fine, but I just feel it's overdoing it for what we have there. Thank you.
And I'm gonna come back with that question because, just because there's fifteen houses on that block, they are also taxpayers to this committee. They are entitled to the same treatment that every street in this town gets. Okay? Every town. Okay? If, if, if we wanna do that, then we take a small street too and we don't do it then either. I mean, there, there's a, a short street that's got seven houses on it, but we do those streets. I don't think we should go off the set because, just because fifteen people, they're taxpayers, they get the same benefit. The water and sewer line needs to be replaced there, so you might as well do it all at once. It's always been that way.
Shark.
Go ahead.
The stormwater meeting, uh, commission met last night and, uh, one of the things, well, they are trying to make that a recreational area around the, the, what I call the Wooddale Reservoir, because there's almost no part of it in Itasca and they don't even have a stormwater committee in Itasca and have no idea about it. So, rather than calling it Itasca Reservoir, I wish we changed the name to Wooddale Reservoir. But they are talking about making that, uh, striping the, the, uh, road, the walkways so that people will know how many miles they went. And one of the things they asked last night is if, when, when we do School Street, uh, Dave will back me up on this, if we, when we do School Street, that we do have an extension for a water fountain on the trail, uh, near, right near the street. It wouldn't be far away so that people can get a drink of water when they're walking or running around or biking around that, uh, mile and a half or two mile track. So, uh, we, we do need, by the way, the house on the end, on the north side of the, south side of the street, uh, the last I heard, it was in the process of being sold to the Forest Preserve. So, it probably, I, maybe John Forrest would know if it's actually completed, the sale of it.
The last conversation I had with, uh, with the representative from DuPage County was that they were still in negotiation. This was about two weeks ago.
Okay.
But they have not closed on it yet, no.
I do know somebody who knows the people who live there and they are anxious to get rid of it. They do wanna sell. So, it, it should be in a very short time, we'll have that property as well. So, we do need the parking. We do need the street to go the full extent because we will need parking over there because it will be hopefully a recreational area. That will be trying to get the Park District and the School Districts interested as well to have activities over there and perhaps provide some other amenities for that trail. Thank you. Dave, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, basically, we're looking on School Street to go basically past the last house and, and then, uh, as far as the curbs go, it's not gonna be any curbs on the north side of the street, correct? It's just on the south side where the houses are, not on the, I thought we were.
No, we'll put curb and gutter on both sides of the street.
I thought we didn't wanna restrict, uh, the, the flow of the water. I thought, keep it natural on the north side. I thought that's what was gonna happen there.
We'll, we'll have to make accommodations for drainage where there is existing ditches. But I think it's important to have curb and gutter on that street for a couple of reasons. One, we, we wanna put, it's a very narrow right of way there. We're, we're trying to put a sidewalk on the north side only. It's gonna be very close to the pavement at some point and, well, throughout most of it, it's gonna be within really the area that if you don't have curb and gutter, you're violating all of the clear zone requirements off the edge of pavement. On the south side, you have power poles that are only about six feet off the edge of pavement. Really the same issue. I, I think a barrier curb is necessary. I mean, even forgetting about the aesthetics and the drainage and any other concerns, just for safety reasons, there's so many things close to the road. I, I think we want the curb and gutter out there.
So, we got curbs on both sides then?
Correct, curb and gutter on both sides.
Christine Winger?
Christine Winger?
If the street is a half mile long and there's a house at the very end by the reservoir, where is the next house in relationship to the one at the end? Is it a quarter?
Well, there's one va, there's one vacant lot between it, but then there's another house, so it's one lot set in. I don't know the fifty or a hundred feet, I suppose, till the next one. I'm not sure.
Where there's active people in there?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Any other problems? Sidewalks? Okay, let's go to section four. Building ground. Any, uh, problems on, uh, pavement replacement and striping City Hall parking lot? Page twenty-seven. Mr. Newville?
When we putting in, uh, Public Works North Plant, all these, is it basically one a year? Is that how this is working out or do we, do we have one a year, each year earmarked to do this? Because I thought that we did something like City Hall a couple of years ago. So, I mean, City Hall's not coming up again, right?
Correct. We'll take, uh, the meat into consideration as we do it. Right now, we are focusing on, uh, North and South Plants as being the two worst pavement areas and a section behind Public Works that, uh, is adjacent to the salt storage facility.
Okay, and as far as the plants go, I'll just bring it all out. I'm sure they're gonna come up here. I mean, we're looking at, we're doing the study to possibly redo our plants, either, you know, upgrade them or put in a brand new one or whatever. If, I mean, I don't wanna be paying, let's say, fifty, a hundred thousand this year, another hundred thousand next year, and then in three years, you know what? We gotta rip it all out because we're gonna put in this new tank over here and a new tank over there so we can handle more gallons. I, I, I'm just trying to avoid this, you know?
Correct, we understand. And we did put most of those wastewater treatment plant projects out about two or three years from the CIP for the plain and simple fact of that we wanted that, um, proposal to come back or the scope of work to come back as such to give us a little more direction. But again, we wanted to put in those earmarkers for these projects because they have been identified by staff going back several years. We did wanna put a place marker that, you know, this work does need to be done and hopefully within twelve months, eighteen months, we'll have an answer and a direction to go. And then at that place, then these items won't be a surprise to the council. They'll already be identified in the CIP and we wanted to keep those place markers in there.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on that? So, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine is pretty much the same. Thirty? Uh, storage bin, go ahead.
No, I was gonna skip down to thirty-two, page thirty-two.
Okay, hang on a minute. Uh, paint fuel, uh, fuel tanks, no problem with that. Okay, thirty-two.
Basically, I.
I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead. No, go ahead. Go ahead.
Uh, the salt dome. Uh, I know, I know because of the past couple of years with, uh, with the snow, we really got hammered on the salt and we paid, uh, I think triple the price last year when we went to rebuy and this year, we're paying double and whatnot. The salt, as far as the salt dome goes, I mean, five hundred and eighty-one ton, are we, we talking? How mu, how many ton does the city use per year?
Sure, that's a good question. Um, historically, going back, uh, five years, five years ago from today, we use nine hundred ton in an average season. Last year, we used twelve hundred ton. This year, what we've purchased so far is equal to about the same of twelve hundred ton. So, incrementally, we've gone up mainly due to the increased amount of snow events that we've had in the last couple of years.
So, in a bad year, we almost used, uh, the salt dome, we would've had to fill it twice. That's what you're telling me.
Correct. And that was a conservative estimate of a five hundred and eighty-one ton dome salt facility. In our current capacity at Public Works, we maybe hold two hundred and fifty to three hundred ton.
And when we're talking the salt, we're not talking anything that the Park District uses or Fire Department, right? I mean, that's just the city streets and whatnot.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Shark?
Do you have any idea how large the salt dome is over by Addison Township, by the fire station?
I believe we had a copy of those plans and I wanna say that salt dome is just a little bit less than eight hundred ton. I could be incorrect on that, but I'm pretty sure I saw the original plans for that and I believe it's eight hundred ton.
Have we explored the possibility of purchasing or leasing some of that empty property where they have the car, the old cars sitting there for salt dome for the city? Cause it says on here, we have yet to be determined where it would go.
We're looking at several options for a location. That's one of them. And I'd like to discuss that with the council next week in executive session under acquisition of property.
Thank you.
Mr. Coles?
That's the same question I was gonna ask. Where do you think you're gonna put it? Cause we tried one place and we got it potway built and engineered and it was in her, on state property and we had to tear it down and re-fix it all back up to state. That was.
We've had some conversation, we've had some conversations with the Fire District and let me just leave it at this for tonight. We're cautiously optimistic and I'd like to talk in a little more detail next week in executive session.
That's the same question I was gonna ask. Okay.
Okay. But I think that's a priority for us this year. Definitely get that salt dome up. Okay, anything else? Uh, Police Department painting and repair exterior building. Need some repair work. Tuck pointing and all that, any problems with that? Page thirty-seven. I don't know when the last time the building was tuck pointed, so. Any problems with that? Anything? I can all that. Okay, uh, uh, siren for, uh.
Page thirty-eight.
You wanna go thirty-eight?
Yeah.
Thirty-eight. Okay, Mr. Coles?
I got a question on the shooting range. It says that it needs hi, high, how, high, how are po, higher power to ammunition? Is that because of, uh, the way it's happening out in the field now that these people are, these, uh?
Yes, but more importantly.
Whoever's shooting at people have stronger, uh, ammunition and, uh, bigger guns than the police department has?
It is on cue. However, uh, the, the, the approach we're taking here is we're trying to get the building, the annex itself, maintain the structural integrity of this building and then move to the inside. The system that we have there right now, it, it, it's a highly environmental concern. This would be more ecolo, ec, not ecologically friendly with regards to the collection and disposal of those, uh, materials that are the end result of firing a weapon.
Yeah.
Uh, we have to maintain proficiency, uh, not only with proficiency, proficiency and competency to maintain the background that we need if there's a liability issue that comes up, but at the same time too, we're looking at that environmental impact that we're having and, uh, making sure that the system that was put in there in the eighties is now converted in the future, not only for the high-power weapons and the handguns, but also for the disposal of those properties after they've been used.
Because when you go out, if you have a squad that goes out with, uh, like, uh, an M squad or something like that where you, you got a, you got a high-powered rifles and stuff like that.
Right, right.
You have to learn how to use them.
The two-twenty, the, the shotgun of the, is, is no longer the standard weapon. It's the two-twenty-three. Uh, we do train in our range right now with that. Uh, we have made some modifications, but once again, this is to maintain the facility, bring it up ecologically on what we have to do to dispose of the materials and also modify the equipment so that, uh, what we're doing right now, maintaining it, is just up to standards for the future.
All right, that's, that's all I wanted to know. Just a good idea.
Okay. What are that? Um, the siren, tornado sirens, we're gonna put a, frankly, put a new one in, right?
Well, this would cover all three of our sirens. Currently, right now, we do have one that, uh, is inoperable and, uh, we are working with the manufacturer in that, hoping to have that thing up and running before the storm season starts. But this is actually going from, uh, our current system, which is many years old, to one which is digital and would be able to have different parameters that we need to do in the ra, in our telecommunications center. So, this is not just one. This would be covering three different locations through the city.
Okay. Wall ceiling replacement, exterior wall ceiling, that's minor. Unless someone's got a question on that, page forty? I'm not that far yet. Uh, forty-one, again, tuck pointing for part of the sta, uh, buildings. Uh, forty-two is, uh, roof covered and replacement. I know everyone's gonna have a debate on forty-three, so we'll get to forty-three and we'll hash that out right now. The windows was a concern that someone had? Okay, so then we'll go on.
Okay. I read the initial, I read the initial review of this, the, the initial draft, so, um, is the description in here the same or, uh, I'll just ask the question that, when I read it the first time, it was, you know, there was clocking as well as looking at all the panes because there's a more proficient pane. And, and I'm all for recocking and if there is, I understand there's some mold buildup in places. We can fix that, but I'm not for replacing the whole wall of windows. So, I would pick our battles on this one. The building's, what, built in nineteen ninety-one? It's not that old.
I think you're, you may be confusing or mixing up a couple of different projects. We've got the window wall that's on the west side of the building and then the part on the rotunda, that's referred to as the curtain wall. And then we have the walls that, where we've also had some failure of the product is in the rotunda, those vertical translucent panels. That's a project separate than the one I'm referring to with the replacement of the curtain wall. The curtain wall itself, what's happening in, and I've talked to two, uh, different contractors that specialize in installing these types of systems. One contractor told me out of the, so you've got, I mean, the wall is, is made out of, out of metal and you've got the glass thermopanes. Unfortunately, the product that they sit in, there, there's rubberized gaskets that the windows sit in and then there's also sealants that are put on when they put the metal cladding on. Those are the parts that are wearing out right now. And, uh, you know, we've gotten almost twenty years out of those products, which is, was, according to both contractors I've talked to, is pretty good. Uh, but what, I mean, at some point in time in the next couple of years, at the minimum, uh, the walls will have to be opened up, have to pull out the thermopanes, replace all that gasketting. They can put it back together, recock it and we can continue on for another twenty years with the same type of curtain wall we have. If we add about fifteen percent to the cost of that, we can install an entirely new wall where the frames will be better insulated, we'll be able to get the energy-efficient windows. We can even probably get the, uh, the coated glass. What that's gonna do is make the building a lot more energy-efficient, reduce our carbon footprint and, uh, you know, that'll take us on for quite a few more years.
But that's for fifteen percent more?
That's what both contractors have estimated to me. As far as the translucent panels in the rotunda, that's a separate project. I'm expecting, uh, you know, some preliminary figures back to get those replaced. I'm actually, I was able to find the original manufacturer of those panels and, and they in fact have the, uh, blueprints from when the building was built. So, they have all the specifications right there. They're just trying to figure out what went wrong and, and, you know, the best way to fix it.
So, do you think the, the reason why it's only fifteen percent more, is it the labor involved?
Correct.
So, that, that's two thousand and eleven, but we're going to look at replacing the, the ton, or by the police station.
Correct. The translucent panels in the rotunda, that's.
Right, we are going to look at that.
We're gonna fast-track that and get that done as soon as possible. Again, depending on where the figures come in, but I would expect to have prices on that so that we can put it in, get it in this budget year.
Okay.
The curtain wall.
Right.
You know, if we can get another year or two out of that, but the problem, once we start experiencing failure of those gaskets and the sealant, then we're gonna have moisture problems. Uh, you have the potential for moisture getting in there in the fall, freezing, and then we're gonna start to have the seals on the, on the thermopanes breaking and, I think probably all of us have experienced that at one point or another in the house. That's where they get cloudy on the inside. So, it is something that's gonna have to, it, it is a, a maintenance issue that at some point in time is gonna need to be addressed.
All right, two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven. Uh, upgrade of, uh, exterior light fixtures, forty-five, anyone got a problem with that? Okay. Moving on to, uh, tab five, miscellaneous, um, huh? Tab five, page forty-six. Okay, uh, miscellaneous summary, uh, GIS system is in there for fifty thousand. Page forty-seven is.
What page is it for the GIS?
Forty-seven.
Okay.
On, uh, tab number, um, five. Fifty thousand, that's to keep the upgrade going on that.
Question?
But, that's.
How much of GIS has been complete and what's left to do?
The sanitary and the storm, uh, are nearly complete. Just a few, uh, additions that were being made to point sources that were being corrected this year. And then currently, the, um, water GIS is being completed this year.
Water and what?
The remainder of the storm.
Okay, water and storm this year. Then what would, what would we need twenty-eleven through twenty-fourteen?
I think the way we envision this project going is that we're constantly going to be making modifications to the GIS system and that would include adding additional base maps if needed of additional signage, a forestry version, for example, maybe one. But I think also there might be some inputs in there for training as well. I know Dave's staff may need, need some training. I know my Public Works staff as well is gonna need some training. I think we envision getting to the point where our utility staff, instead of handwriting a valve that they may work on or a hydrant that may get replaced, I think it'll go directly into the GIS system. So, I think at some point, we're gonna move out of the, having a professional services, uh, agreement and more into where staff is doing those items in-house, but also let Dave comment on as well.
Well, I just mentioned right now, we don't, we, City Services and Engineering only have one license for the GIS software and very little training in it. So, in addition, you know, we're talking about doing additional, what I call modules, where we might add, uh, parkway trees, we might add signs and any number of things we could add. But there's also software, training, um, software updates, once we own it, um, map production. I guess those are the kind of things we're looking at.
And that would all come out of the allocations here?
Correct.
Okay, okay. And then lastly, when we say this year to finish storm, uh, water and storm, is that fiscal year oh-eight, oh-nine or oh-nine, oh-ten where you're looking to finish?
Well, water completely finished this fiscal year. Storm sewer, and if you recall when we talked about this earlier, but on the storm sewer side, there were some, uh, there's some manholes that they're gonna have to go back to, some structures, and we don't think there's enough money in this current fiscal year to cover all of that. So, part of that fifty thousand is to finish up that storm sewer, but certainly ninety-some percent of it will be done this year.
Thank you.
Mr. Coles?
Uh, could I ask you a question? What was Baxter, which, would, uh, Baxter and Wood doing checking the sewers? The, the, the other day at, uh, over by, uh, hmm, I'm trying to think of the street. I can't remember the street.
They're, they're acquiring all that data for the GIS system. They set up on every manhole and inlet with their GPS unit and they get a reading on it. Then the guy brings that back to the office, downloads it into the computer and that's, that's the basis for the GIS.
I happen to see that. I, I also have another question. Are you ever gonna put GIS in the, in the trucks?
I think you're talking about the, uh, AVL system, Automatic Vehicle Locator, that was proposed. I think I saw it going back two years in the budget. No, we don't have that, um, back in the budget.
Wouldn't it be a good idea?
If the council would like, we would go back, revisit and take a look at it.
I, I think it's a good idea, seriously. I mean, you may not have some of the guys, uh, that are working for you, don't, uh, might not like it, but, uh, if you need an emergency and you don't know where the trucks are, you don't have to hunt for them. Uh, you know where they are, so.
We can definitely look into it. We have, uh, um, the previous director did do some.
I know, he got turned down, but, uh, maybe things have changed. I was for it.
Christine Winger?
I was for it as well. I supported it, but before you would do any work on that, I'd like to see you take a straw vote to see if there is support on that because it failed last time and I don't wanna create work when it's just gonna come back and fail.
Wait.
That's probably not really a capital.
It's not a capital project.
We'll, we'll take, we'll take a look at that. We're, we're starting the budget process right now.
It's not a.
And the, actually, departmental budget requests are due in by the end of next week, so John can add that as a wishlist request and we'll see how it shakes out.
Fine.
I mean, it's not a capital project. I'm sorry.
It's not something new, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
How we, uh, don't all the employees have radios in those trucks? Aren't they reachable by that?
Correct.
So, this would just be a duplication of what, what we have now, really.
Uh, the plus and the minuses to the system both involve knowing where your vehicles are at any given time. They also allow a lot in tracking, uh, work progress, especially in snow removal. That's where, um, I have. That's where I have experience with them in the past where you could check on a screen once a vehicle has completed its route. He, they call in, let you know, yep, I've completed snow route twenty-three. And you can visually go back and make sure that they've actually completed those point sources when you get that, that far into that program to be able to do that. So I think there's a lot of different ways of-
Okay, as, as it was mentioned, we can get back to that another time.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Forest tree for diseased trees, parkway? Mr. Cadala, short and sweet.
Ten thousand a year for five years, is this in anticipation of a problem? Has a problem been identified? Are you being proactive and going to start to remove some of the less healthy trees regardless of having found the beetle? What's the situation?
Correct. We're being proactive. We- We evaluated all of our parkway trees, identified three hundred and fifty-three ash trees in poor, declining health. And our goal is to systematically, over the next five years, remove those on a as-needed basis and replant. And those costs are to do that.
So as needed, but they will be replaced, I mean, they'll be removed every year anyway. I mean, you're going to, you're going to find a group of trees in the, in the worst health every year and begin to remove them.
Correct.
I mean, alive is alive. I mean, as needed is a bit gray, so.
For the most part, we, of those three hundred and fifty-three, most of those trees are in poor health. So as far as lifespan-wise, they probably won't go beyond five years.
Okay, thank you.
So the first, the first couple of years were more diseased and true dangerous hazardous trees, hangers of that nature. And then further on, it would be more trees that were either just in declining health. And we also wanted to mix it up a little bit so we wouldn't have a heavy hit the first year. And, you know, we want to space it out through five years.
Does this remove all ash trees on city property or only a number of the three hundred and fifty-three that are declining now?
We only identified the ash trees that were in declining health. We did not identify every ash tree in the city.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's what I want to make sure you weren't doing. Thank you.
Remember, we have two licensed arbiters now, so they'll handle that. Telephone system update, telephone system, voicemail update. Any problems with that? Okay, let's go to six. Your favorite passage? Go ahead. Mr. Newzil?
All right, page fifty-one, we're talking about the flexicor roof, south plant. What's wrong with this? Concrete falling apart or it's just leaking? That needs a new roof on top?
It has not been up kept within the last twenty years. We're having leaks. The roof had, basically is to the point of where we either need to do some serious work to it or we're going to end up having to rip the flexicor off and replace that.
I have a little experience with flexicor because, as previously noted, when I put up my building, we did flexicor roof. When we started to get leaks, we just ripped off the, the top coating, re-insulated and put on a new roof and we didn't take off the flexicor itself. The flexicor's in good shape. I mean, this is another one of those things that coming up, you know, the study's coming up in about a year, they might say, you know what? This building needs to be improved, this and that. All of a sudden, we're expanding that building slightly or whatever, remodeling. You know, because I think next couple of pages over, the reservoir tanks, three, four, and five, I mean, these are the tanks that hold the water and stuff.
I think our goal with some of these, we're protecting the investment that we currently have and knowing that the controls, the pumps, et cetera, that are in that building do have a cost associated with them. And we have to make sure that if our roof is leaking, we need to maintain that. It's been-
What kind of, what do you, insulation or black tie, what do you got, like a rubber roof out there?
I believe it's a rubber membrane.
With the stone?
It's a rubber membrane.
So, I mean, couldn't it be easier to just take off the rubber membrane and put in new insulation, new membrane and-
That's what this price is.
That's what the price is.
Oh, it sounds, I took it as you guys were ripping the flexicor off and putting on new flexicor. I knew it sounded kind of cheap. Okay, I got it.
Any other questions on that? Page fifty-two is tuck pointing for the building and some painting. Fifty-three, Potter Street, re-roofing, plant. Any questions on that? Okay. Plant maintenance well stay, well six upgrade, eighty thousand. Yes, I'm sure.
Which one is this? Where is it located?
I want to say, I want to say this one's located in, not by the firehouse. I want to say this is located on Riker? Is it?
I believe it's Mill and Sarah. Mill and Sarah as well, six.
So if I may go further, we not, we not only need the one that's on station in Potter, but we need the one on Mill and Sarah as well?
Correct. Three, five, and six are our three backup wells in the city, I believe. Don't quote me on those numbers, but I believe it's three, five, and six. Three, we did work to last year. Five, we did work to last year. Six is the only one that we have not rehabbed recently. Lane Wester did several projects last year. We ended-